And whereas the city of Mount Vernon steps to raise awareness about the needs to combat hunger in every part of our state and to provide additional resources to citizens. And whereas the city of Mount Vernon is committed to working with Mid-Ohio Food Bank in educating people about the role and importance in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention. More than 500,000 individuals in Ohio rely on food provided by Mid-Ohio Food Bank annually. And whereas the Mid-Ohio Food Bank distributed more than 53 million pounds of food and groceries in 2013 through its network of food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, and other community organizations. And whereas food banks across the state, including Mid-Ohio Food Bank, will promote numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and attention to encourage involvement in efforts to end hunger. On behalf of the citizens of Mount Vernon, Ohio, City Council, and Richard K. Mavis, Mayor of the City of Mount Vernon, do hereby recognize September as Hunger Action Month in the city of Mount Vernon, and we call this to the attention of our residents. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. And we are fortunate to be in a community where each night of the week there is meals for hungry people, and if people want to make donations to that, they would certainly be appreciated for that service we've provided to this community. We're very fortunate. They can call that 211 line, and they'll give you a listing of everyone.
Thank you. We have three people speaking on matters not covered by legislation. The first one is Brian Gardner on the utilization of Ariel Foundation Park website. Please come to the podium and say your name and address, and you have three minutes.
I'm Brian Gardner, 501 North Jefferson Street. We at Videsoft, our business, we put together and donated a website for the park. I just kind of wanted to take a quick minute to familiarize everybody. I had this in mind for Scott in particular from the Parks Department at first. But just in case any of you or any of your areas of specialty in the city wanted to learn a little more about it, there's a lot of valuable marketing information for the park or anything else, as you guys are going to soon be taking it over. If you look at the first page, it's just the analytics end of the thing of the website kind of information. This is only a small example of what made from this. Just to make it real brief, if any of you have generated for us, I'd be happy to rate you, and if you want to learn any more of it. And I hope that's about it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. The next person is Kendra O'Reilly with the Girl Scouts of Ohio. Again, please give your name and address.
And our Girl Scout office is actually also at 3230 Bowers Lane, Zanesville. I am a Community Services Director with Girl Scouts of Ohio's Heartland, and tonight I'm here to tell you a little bit about Girl Scouting and Girl Scouting in Mount Vernon in particular. In Girl Scouting, our mission is to build girls of courage, confidence, and character that make the world a better place. Girl Scouts of Ohio's Heartland serves about 34,000 girls in 30 counties, one of those counties being Knox County, where we serve about 400 girls, and roughly half of those girls live inside Mount Vernon. With funding from United Way of Knox County, we are able to serve girls in Mount Vernon in a variety of ways. Many people think of Girl Scouting as troops and camping, and those are one way that United Way supports us. This summer, our volunteers held an evening Twilight Camp out at Camp Cornish for girls to experience outdoor education by exploring nature and just having fun outdoors. Another way we use our United Way funds is a way that many people don't think of Girl Scouting, but through our STEM programming, our science, technology, engineering, and math programs. In the spring each year, we partner with Mount Vernon Middle School to serve their eighth grade students, and we use our NASA, which is our science and physical science programs, to give them some hands-on activities to complement things that they're already learning in the classroom. And these activities were all designed by NASA scientists for Girl Scouts to use. This spring, we served 221 students in the middle school, and 116 of them were girls. Through these types of experiences, we are able to help girls build the courage, confidence, and character to change their community. Some of the things that girls here in Mount Vernon have done, they've helped with food drives and also made and collected blankets for homeless and also donated blankets to the Children's Hospital in Columbus. We help them not only to change the community now as Girl Scouts, but also to learn that courage, confidence, and character so that they can change the community as they move into adulthood also. Without the support of community members like you, our girls could not grow to those great heights. And I'd like to thank you for supporting the girls of Mount Vernon in Girl Scouting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you. Our next person is Bill E. McRory, Jr., from Vibeau T's High Street, wants to talk about alleys.
I don't have to introduce myself. He just introduced me.
I did. I did. I haven't written down here.
Because my jaw's sore, and I don't want to talk very much. You're going to continue to see me until someone gives me some kind of answers that I can understand. I mean, I've almost got the petition to vacate signed by everybody except the one man that lives in Florida. I'm still trying to get in touch with him. I understand though that y'all don't like to vacate alleys. I still don't understand if it's a city property, why it's not maintained better. I mean, I understand it's not a priority, but what's it going to be, when is it going to be a priority if I slip and fall and you have to pay for my broken leg in the alley? I mean, I guess I don't understand. If I can't park on the street when it's three inches of snow, and it's going to be a big one this time because Farmer's Almanac says so, my wife drives a Mini Cooper, so she's going to take my car, and that Mini Cooper's going to be stuck, so I'm going to be walking where I want to go. Who's going to maintain my alley? Why should I have to maintain the alley for city property? That's the only question I have. But I'll just keep coming until somebody tells me one way or the other.
Mr. Glass.
Yes, sir.
We had this conversation prior. I don't know whether which one of us has misled. The city does maintain those alleys as far as plowing, correct?
Sure.
Now, and I was the one that said I don't think alleys are the priority when it comes to plowing, but do you have any idea approximately where it is when we plow alleys? Wouldn't it be when all the streets are cleared?
Yeah, once the streets are cleared, then they go down the alleys. I mean, are you saying that you've never seen them in the alley?
Well, I haven't because I haven't lived here that long.
All right.
Have you seen them in the alley, John?
No.
Okay.
They're not in the alleys.
They've never plowed the snow in your alley?
No. The alleys were plowed by a resident that lived in the alley.
I'm not going to argue with you.
No, I know. And I'm not trying to cause-
He does plow alleys.
No, they don't. Our alley. Okay. Well, that was all I had. I don't want to use-
Maybe it's already been plowed.
Maybe it's been plowed by the time all the streets are plowed, and the alleys aren't plowed until after the streets are done.
Depending on where your priority list is, David, I'll give you that, because the gentleman that plowed the alley was a resident, and was plowed by that particular person.
Well, I believe that. I mean, they might have got into it before we did, and if he lived there or he lived close and he wanted it open, he would have done that.
Absolutely. But the alleys are plowed in, so if you leave the street because of the three-inch ordinance that says you're going to be ticketed if you're not there. And you remember, we did have a concern where the truck, our city truck, hit a car trying to get around it on High Street because it was parked in the street illegally.
Sure.
And then when you plow the alley in, you can't get out.
So they plow the mouth of the alley in?
Correct. And my solution to that, and I hate to bloviate here, and I'm not trying to do that, is that in Mount Vernon, we used to plow in the center of the street. Center of the street was where it was plowed. Do you know anybody that rides, drives in the center of the street? Why can't we do that?
Well, and then after it was-
Well, that's a nice thing to do when you have a street that's 50 foot wide, but the street that's 20 foot wide, that's pretty difficult.
Well, let me share this with you then. Not to be argumentative, Dave, but over in the circle over there where Judy lives, why don't we plow it into that park instead of onto the driveways of those people in that park?
Well-
I mean, it's just a suggestion. I'm just trying to cut down on all these problems, but you can see where the problem lies.
But I wanted to assure you, the city does plow alleys. Now, they're not going to get done for the square, but they are on the list. And then what I'm hearing, maybe the guy plowed them before the city got to it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm guessing-
We have several alleys.
Sure. The first priority is to get the main arteries open, then we go to all the secondary streets, and then you go to the alleys. And we have to keep the streets open.
If I may, John, when the snow was plowed to the center of the street, there was a second step. The city did gather that snow into trucks, and it was delivered to the parks-
Correct.
And deposited there.
Yes, ma'am. That is correct. And I will say one other thing, and that is we probably need to then maybe change the ordinance and how the ordinance is written, because alleys are not supposed to be through ways. They are for emergency vehicles, and they're for refuge. So unless we change the ordinance, that's what the ordinance actually says here in town. They're not supposed to be a connection from one point to another. Refuge and emergency vehicles is what our alleys are supposed to be for.
Sure. And, you know, rear access to houses, all those kind of things.
That's what the vacation part of this is what he's, Bill, I think I hear you saying is vacation becomes now your driveway.
Right. I mean, and I'm willing to do that, and I'm willing to pave my driveway now, and I'm willing to maintain my driveway, but I shouldn't have to do it for the city. And what I'm hearing is, yes, you do plow the alleys, but is that like three days later? Is that like two days later? Is it like late at night? I mean, I-
Bill, it could easily be two or three days later.
That's what I wanted to hear.
We have lots of alleys.
They have lots of streets, too.
All right, well-
Depends upon snow, doesn't it? Also how much snow we're getting.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We would like to introduce our new police chief. Will you stand up there, and you have anything to say, Chief Monroe?
Hi there. I just kind of wanted to introduce myself. Most of you I've met at one time or another, but my name's Chief Roger A. Monroe. I've been a 25-year vet, Mount Vernon Police Department. And I've talked to some of you on different occasions throughout my career, and some of you more recently on other issues. But I kind of wanted to set an open invitation to invite you to the station and take a look at our operations. One of the council members brought to my attention that some of you may have never even seen the police station. So I'd like to have maybe you, Mr. President, coordinate with your people and set up a time or a date that would work for all you guys, and I'd actually give you a tour of the police station, show you a little bit of our operations and how things work, and if you guys have any questions about the procedures or how we do things or what's going on. It's been brought to my attention that there's some concerns about our community in general, safety concerns, drug activity, things along those lines. I'd like to take another date and maybe address those issues and just kind of go forward and keep an open door with the council, let them know where I stand, where I'm coming from, and my experience. So do you guys have any questions for me at this time?
No, sir. Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you.
And thank you. I would love to tour. I've asked before.
And we have had field trips. We had a field trip to Rolls Royce a month or so ago, and we've had field trips out to the new-
Maintenance building?
New maintenance building.
Water wastewater.
And so we'd like to do that.
It probably won't be as exciting as that, but I definitely-
Well, I don't know.
It doesn't take much to beat the water wastewater tour.
That was a great tour, Michael.
The wastewater?
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
All right, folks.
Thank you, Chief.
Counsel, we're now ready to move to the legislative portion of the meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda for the legislative portion? Then, Mrs. Noel, please read these by title and number only. And the first one, we have the resolutions for third reading. Resolutions for second reading, we'll begin with Resolution Number 2014-60. Mrs. Noel.
Resolution Number 2014-60, a resolution to authorize the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract with the Director of Transportation for resurfacing and related work on portions of U.S. Route 36 and State Route 768 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. I'd like to give this resolution a second read tonight.
Yeah, this resolution receives its second reading. Next resolution is Resolution 2014-63, also for second reading.
Resolution Number 2014-63, a resolution to grant an easement in Plum Alley to the Wordward Development Corporation.
Mr. Fair.
I'd like to also give it its second read this evening.
All right. Next resolution then is Resolution 2014-64. Mrs. Noel.
Resolution Number 2014-64, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to sell by sealed bid a fire vehicle not needed for public use by the City of Mount Vernon.
Mrs. Siebel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to give this the second reading also.
Okay. That concludes the resolutions for second reading. We'll now move on to resolutions for first reading. The first one is Resolution 2014-66. Mrs. Noel.
Resolution Number 2014-66, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director of the City of Mount Vernon to accept the donation of 2.735 acres from Everest Investments LTV located along the north side of Esset Park to facilitate construction of a bike path and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Carl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I request that the rule requiring three separate readings be suspended and that this resolution be taken to its third and final reading.
Second.
And moved in second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mrs. Noel.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Carl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion for approval of the resolution 2014-66.
Second.
And moved in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Carl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I understand after talking to Mr. Glass today that this does need to move forward. This is an ODOT project, and maybe you can explain, like you did to me, Mr. Glass, you know, who is the Everest Investments Limited and exactly, you know, where is this location and why are they willing to give it to the city?
We've been working with them for quite a while to get an easement for their, or some property to complete the bike path at Esset Park. This is actually the ownership group that owns Esset Park. It's a subsidiary of the Ariel Corporation, and they're donating this 2.39 acres, I believe, to the city. It'll be from the factories north, they'll take in the dike and the river, and they're making that donation. And we have to get this recorded and in ODOT's hands by the first of the month to facilitate the bike path project that's going to be built next spring. There's no cost to the city.
They're just accepting-
Right. A donation.
The donation, okay.
Any other discussion?
Just a question. Once we build all these bike paths in the city, is the city then responsible to maintain them, or does it go back to the, who's maintaining all the other bike paths, the parks?
I think that discussion is yet to be had for the bike paths that are inside the city, you know, because right now the Cozy Gap Trail maintains their bike path into the city. But this would connect with that and connect with the bike path that now comes to station break. So it's part of the overall picture. I think there needs to be a lot of discussion about that.
That's what I'd say will be discussed in the future. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Noel.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. The next resolution for this evening is Resolution 2014-67. Mrs. Noel.
Resolution Number 2014-67, a resolution authorizing and directing the Auditor of the City of Mount Vernon to transfer certain funds.
Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've moved to suspend the rule for three separate readings and take Resolution 2014-67 to its third and final reading, please.
Second.
And moved in second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mrs. Noel.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Hillier.
Thank you. Moved to adopt Resolution 2014-67, please.
Second.
And moved in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Hillier.
Thank you. Counsel, you have in front of you six accounts. We're going to transfer money to six other accounts in about a total of $38,000, and I will let Mr. Scott explain all that.
Thank you, Mr. Hillier and Counsel. Item one for $6,500 into final payoff, we have another employee that has separated from the city, and we need to make settlement on that. Item two is for a workers' comp contractor, that is, the company who manages our workers' comp program, $5,960. Item three is for our email backup server services for $4,450. Item four is upcoming routine maintenance in the fire department. The chief has asked for $8,000 to be transferred there. Item five is for vehicle repairs in the amount of $4,400 for our street department, and item six for $9,000. Let's see here, we have, yes, we have a utility cost at the water park. We have seen a continuing increase in our electric service this year, so we need to get some additional resources in there. That's all, Mr. Hillier.
The $4,400 in number five for the street vehicle maintenance?
Yeah.
That's different than the $4,400 that's in the then and now, correct?
They will pair together.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Noel.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Next resolution this evening is Resolution 2014-68. Mrs. Noel.
Resolution Number 2014-68, a resolution authorizing and directing the Auditor of the City of Mount Vernon to make supplemental appropriations.
Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've moved to suspend the rule for three separate readings and take Resolution 2014-68 to its third and final reading, please.
Second.
Moved in second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mrs. Noel.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Hillier.
Moved to adopt Resolution 2014-68, please.
Second.
Moved in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Hillier.
Thank you. Counsel, we have two accounts both receiving some funds and all. Mr. Scott, if you want to take care of that, please.
Yes, Mr. Hillier and Counsel. Item one in the amount of $484,476 is coming from the Clean Ohio Green Space Conservation Grant Program. That will provide us $373,631, and then the journal fund transfer into capital for $110,845 will be paired together and will cover the Harcourt Road acquisition property that you guys have already adopted. Item two is for $45,787 into capital equipment. The Ariel Foundation has given us a grant, and this grant is going to be for the acquisition of a new vehicle, truck in this case, that will be powered by natural gas and also a watering tank to help use to water all the new tree planting projects that we've got, as well as a generator and signage to go on the vehicle. So we have these all ready to go as soon as you folks appropriate the funds, we can make the purchase. This will be a state purchasing piece of equipment as well.
So is this the vehicle primary for parks then, or will be used?
It's Parks Department.
Just parks?
Parks, yes.
Yeah, for a lot of the trees.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Vale.
Mr. Hillier, we certainly want to thank Ariel Foundation once again for their gracious gifts.
Thank you. Was in my note-
I see in the today's newspaper that the fueling station will be opened. Six to eight weeks is about what our lead time will be on this vehicle, but certainly that's where we'll be getting the fuel for.
And we have a ribbon cutting out there in about two weeks, so.
Mrs. Noel.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Next resolution is Resolution 2014-69. Mrs. Noel.
Resolution Number 2014-69, a resolution authorizing and directing the Auditor of the City of Mount Vernon to pay bills pursuant to Section 5705.41D then and now certification.
Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've moved to suspend the rule for three separate readings and take Resolution 2014-69 to its third and final reading, please.
I'll second.
Moved in second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mrs. Noel.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Hillier.
Thank you. Motion to adopt Resolution 2014-69.
Second.
And moved in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Hillier.
Thank you. Then and now, we didn't have a purchase order number for $4,400. What happened?
That's a little bit of a confusing story, but it's a good one. The purchase order was written, and there wasn't enough money in the account, so Terry sends it back to the department, and then they rewrite it on a different account. And there was money in that account, but it was the inappropriate account to do maintenance of a vehicle.[1532.80] of a vehicle. So until you transferred this money, there was no money in that account.
So the maintenance was only forty-four hundred dollars then, not eighty-eight?
Right. That's correct.
Oh, right.
Yeah. Yeah, well, we did, as they described, we had a purchase order that was presented correctly. However, there are insufficient funds to make the encumbrance. It was returned back to the department. The department said, oh, I'll just choose a different line of accounts because I got money there. Well, when that came through, we, of course, rejected that again and indicated that probably what really should be done is exactly what we're carrying through for tonight, is make a transfer, put money in the correct account and do a proper.
So is this maintenance to one vehicle?
Yes, it was a turbocharger on the vehicle, yeah.
So in other words, you don't appreciate creativity?
Not in that regard.
I will say, compared to some then and nows in the past, this was better than halfway, right?
Yeah, they tried. Yeah, I mean, you have to admit, they tried.
They did try, that's exactly where I was going. In the past, on some of these, they've never tried.
The effort, the effort was put forth, it just wasn't proper.
I appreciate that.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Noel.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is resolution two thousand fourteen day seventy. Mrs. Noel.
Resolution number two thousand fourteen dash seventy. A resolution to authorize the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract with the Director of Transportation for resurfacing and related work on State Route five eighty-six within the city of Mount Vernon and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Fair.
Thank you, Mr. President. This will receive its first read this evening.
Thank you. Resolution two thousand fourteen day seventy receives its first reading. Next resolution is resolution two thousand fourteen day seventy-one. Mrs. Noel.
Resolution number two thousand fourteen dash seventy-one. A resolution approving the appointment of Jim Gaston as an alternate member to the Board of Property Maintenance Appeals of Mount Vernon, Ohio.
Mr. Francis.
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution will receive its first reading tonight.
Resolution two thousand fourteen day seventy-one receives its first reading. Next resolution is resolution two thousand fourteen day seventy-two. Mrs. Noel.
Resolution number two thousand fourteen dash seventy-two. A resolution approving the appointment of Jim Meyer as an alternate member to the Board of Property Maintenance Appeals of Mount Vernon, Ohio.
Mr. Francis.
Thank you, Mr. President. This also will receive its first reading.
Resolution two thousand fourteen day seventy-two receives its first reading. Next resolution this evening is resolution two thousand fourteen day seventy-three. Mrs. Noel.
Resolution number two thousand fourteen dash seventy-three. A resolution approving the appointment of Josh Klein to the Board of Property Maintenance Appeals of Mount Vernon, Ohio.
Mr. Francis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution twenty-fourteen seventy-three will receive its first reading.
Resolution receives its first reading. Move on to resolution two thousand fourteen day seventy-four. Mrs. Noel.
Resolution number two thousand fourteen dash seventy-four. A resolution approving the appointment of Marilyn Nike to the Board of Property Maintenance Appeals of Mount Vernon, Ohio.
Mr. Francis.
And resolution twenty-fourteen seventy-four will receive its first reading.
Receives its first reading. Move on to resolution two thousand fourteen day seventy-five. Mrs. Noel.
Resolution number two thousand fourteen dash seventy-five. A resolution approving appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals of Mount Vernon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Francis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Request that the rule requiring three separate readings be suspended and that this resolution be taken to its third and final reading.
I second.
Move in second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mrs. Noel.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Francis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I request adoption of resolution twenty-fourteen seventy-five.
Second.
Second.
Been moved in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Francis.
This is for the appointment of Phil Harold, and I will just move to Mr. Glass if you have anything you would like to add.
Well, I think maybe the thing that jumps out at everybody is that we're asking to pass this one after we passed on the last four. We have time to set up this new property maintenance enforcement board, but Phil is going to be the alternate to the zoning board of appeals. And if you recall, you changed the makeup of the board of appeals here six months ago, and there are only five members. So the reason we have the two is that you also established the fact that four is a quorum on that board, so we have a difficult time getting a quorum to be able to open the meeting, so we want to have the two alternates available as soon as possible. So that's why we're asking you to pass this one tonight. And you just passed the other alternate at our last meetings.
Yes. Any other discussion? Mrs. Noel.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. The final resolution for this evening is resolution two thousand fourteen day seventy-six. Mrs. Noel.
Resolution number two thousand fourteen dash seventy-six. A resolution approving the appointment of Robert Drews to the Mount Vernon Municipal Planning Commission and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Francis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Request that the rules requiring three separate readings be suspended and that we take this resolution be taken to its third and final reading.
I second.
Move in second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mrs. Noel.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Francis.
Move to adopt resolution twenty-fourteen seventy-six.
I second.
Been moved in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Francis.
Mr. Glass, I would just come to you again.
Only that Mr. Drews is, you know, a fine individual, and we think he'll serve the planning commission well. You know, the planning commission often has some very difficult decisions, and we think he's going to be a good addition to that committee.
I echo that thought.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Noel.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted, and that concludes the resolutions. We move on to ordinances. We have no ordinances for third reading, none for second reading, but we, I'm sorry, we do have one for second reading, and that is ordinance number two thousand fourteen dash thirteen. Mrs. Noel.
Ordinance number two thousand fourteen dash thirteen. An ordinance establishing compensation for the assistant to the city engineer effective August fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Francis.
I give this ordinance, two thousand fourteen thirteen, its second reading.
Okay. Ordinance two thousand fourteen dash thirteen receives its second reading, and that concludes the legislative portion of this meeting. We'll move on now to remarks in the administration. Mr. Scott.
Nothing further, Mr. President.
Mr. Glass.
Just a few minor things. Work should be starting up at the American National Can here later this week, so we'll start to see some of that earth being moved around and some of the contamination taken out. That project is not underway, you know, obviously that's been funded by the state, so. Again, that's another thing, we don't have any money in.
I want to elaborate on a couple of those ordinances we gave one reading to tonight, and that were the two ODOT legislations. I know we've talked about it in the past, but there are four or five state paving projects coming through here in the next three years, Terry, or four years, and our share of those four projects is going to be just slightly under a million dollars. I'm not trying to scare anybody, but that's a lot of money, and it'll take a lot of our paving budget, and we need to start thinking about that before this next budget time comes around.
Now, Dave, why are these all coupled together to ultimately require that much from our funding at one time?
Well, you know, the majority of that funds are, is that twenty percent, you know, these are all eighty-twenty splits on these state paving projects that come through, and then we're responsible for all the pedestrian ramps and those kind of things, and these are estimates. I mean, we asked those same questions and had two different meetings with ODOT trying to sort these out, and Terry's been able to talk them and Cameron into sliding the one project back a little bit to spread it over four years instead of three.
It's rather inconsiderate of ODOT, I think.
Well, I mean, look at some of the roads that we have. I mean, West High needs to be fixed.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Sandusky Street needs to be fixed, so.
But not all in the same year, maybe.
Yeah, I know. Well, they ignore us for eight or ten years, and then all of a sudden they want to do them all, so.
Now, can we bond that, Terry?
We wouldn't bond it because we'd break it out over the years in which it's spread out, so we wouldn't.
So this is going to be over the course of three years?
About four years, correct.
But we're going to have very little funding available for our in-town street paving?
I believe twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen is about where the biggest chunk of money is going to appear, so, you know, we got two options. One is we can begin setting aside some resources in some years just to help get us there, but we still will have cost not to that magnitude. It's, I think, maybe three hundred and fifty thousand or four hundred thousand in that one selective year where the highest amount is coming. The other two is going to get spread out over a couple of different years.
So this is projected to be in seventeen and eighteen, but not?
Sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen is, yeah.
Okay.
We have said, we have set aside money in the past for projects.
Sure, sure.
I mean, I definitely would entertain looking at that in the budget as well.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, and not to be some dire predictor here, but in eighteen is when the Mount Vernon Avenue Bridge is scheduled, and that's going to cost us five million dollars. So I just thought I would depress you a little bit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do have a, on your American National Can.
Yes.
Are we going to secure that better? I drove up there Sunday. I drove back through there, saw kids riding bike, I saw a child riding a bike. Right now, you can drive in and out of there as you please, and I, really, there's nothing saying you can't.
Yeah, we'll have some discussions with the contractor. It's not our property, obviously, but we can have the contractors secure that a little better.
I mean, it's not, I mean, I go up there about once a month just to see if there's anything going on, and there's some paths pretty heavily beaten in there.
Yeah. I mean, you are correct.
There'll be a lot of activity taking place. That project will probably only last a couple of months, but a significant amount of work will be accomplished at that point in time, so there'll be quite a bit of.
I mean, as we all know, if there's a lawsuit, they go after it wherever they can.
Sure. Now, that, just to make sure I kind of understand this also, that section in the center we're talking about, the city owns the Dyke Side and they also, eleven acres, I believe, and the other side to the Sandusky eleven acres.
None of that.
That's ours?
None of that has happened. None of that will happen until this project is a hundred percent clean and done, and that's when the situation with the land transfer will happen. It still all belongs to American National Can's parent company, which is Pechonay or?
Rio Tinto.
Rio Tinto.
Oh, Rio Tinto, yeah, I'm sorry.
And we've been in contact, Cameron and I have had a couple of conference calls over the last week in working with the engineering people as well as the contractor on this project. Due to the magnitude of some of the work being performed up there, it has exceeded its original cost, and Rio Tinto has then again contributed the additional matching monies that need to be put into it. So the contractor is ready to go with the work, and the resources currently under the project's projection, modified it is, has been secured also with everybody.
And one last thing, Mr. President. The American Electric Power, who is rebuilding that power line that runs from Mount Vernon Avenue along Center Run, Clear to Academia, is simply rebuilding their existing power line and rebuilding the poles. There's no additional power going up through there. These aren't massive, high-tension poles, and the only reason I say that is because I've gotten about a half a dozen calls in the last.
I bet you have, yes.
And I know we've had this discussion a bunch of times over the last year, but there is no additional power in these lines, it's simply rebuilding the line that's already there.
They just look a lot more dramatic.
I know.
Well, people have concerned, been concerned about the voltage, and.
Right, and that is not going to happen.
Yeah, I questioned that early on, and Scott Zimmerman has reconfirmed that with AEP.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Brown.
Well, this is my first meeting as the law director, and I want to thank the various members of council and the administration for their support as we got to this point, and I look forward to many more years working with you.
Thank you, and welcome.
Welcome.
On board. Keep us straight. Tough job. Mr. Hager.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Glass, we have not had an appeal for code violation yet to this point, because I know we've been out there.
No, we have not.
Very good, so that means we're doing what we need to be doing.
Absolutely. I can get you all a copy of the list of the things that Joel's dealt with in East Park.
I had stopped in his office Friday, and he'd shown me how he compiled a list, and I think that would be interesting to see and where we are, maybe on however basis he wants to report it, but.
There's a weekly report that comes out.
I think it'd be neat to see. Secondly, counsel, I came across some information that I found interesting in maybe the battle of the truck situation downtown and on our residential streets. The website is gps.gov, and basically it says how to report residential truck traffic due to improper route suggestions. Have you ever been to the website?
I have not, no.
Well, one of the interesting, it says, "Report violations." Now, I'm going to read this, and there's a phone number. It says, "If your neighborhood has posted restrictions on commercial truck traffic, you may report violations to your local transportation authority or this FMCSA," and the phone number's one eight eight eight, one eight eight, three six eight, seven two three eight. It says, "Be prepared to provide a license plate number and company name for each incident." It says, "The maximum federal penalty for failing to comply with a posted route restriction is eleven thousand dollars for the company and twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars for the driver." And what they're saying is if we have the proper signage, which we do on East High Street, there's three, if not four, before they miss the turn. I called this number. Two rings, I had a live person, and a very informative person. He also gave me two other numbers to call about what we might be able to do with our GPS. It's a phone number that I have on my phone. I intend on using it. I think council needs to spread that number out. We have an increasing number of trucks downtown Mount Vernon. If you're in an office or a building downtown, they go through, it shakes the buildings. We get continued reports of trucks on East High Street. There was just one last week I got a call on. I intend on passing out this number, and I think we need to use it. And I was told one of the biggest problems, I talked to Donnie Riker Trucking, is that people, these, a lot of these drivers and these companies are not using truck GPS, they're using just a residential GPS like you and I would use. And I think we do enough violations, as long as we have the signs, we have them on both ends of Main Street, we might be able to curb a little bit of this.
Can you repeat the number, Michael?
Yes. One, eight, 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 three, six, eight, seven, two, three, eight.
Once again, eight, eight, eight.
Three, six, eight, seven, two, three, eight. I have a license number and a company name.
Okay.
Mr. Glass, in light of that, can we be sure we have all the signage on Edward Road and all those places? Can we double-check that to make sure we are covered?
Yeah, certainly will.
And I still think we need to possibly look into, and one of the things Donnie Riker did say, and I appreciate him talking to me for as long as he did, is maybe updating some of our signs, because truck drivers have, do have a lot of signs, but he said there's other signs out there that we may be able to go to that will catch an eye if somebody is looking for them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mrs. Carl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome, Chief Monroe, welcome, Mr. Brown. Glad to have you with us and to have your, have you here at the meeting to help us go through the things we have to learn about and discuss. And I just want to tell everybody that, remind everybody that this weekend is the final operation days of the Mount Vernon City Community Pool, and so you want to get out, I guess Friday, or Saturday, Sunday, and Monday will be the last three days of operation before the pool closes for the year. And we certainly want to welcome any suggestions, any comments that you might have about the pool operation this past year, and I think that the council will be discussing, you know, how we can improve our communications with the public about the pool and what we can do to better serve the public as far as community pool is concerned. So we welcome, welcome your comments and suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Siebel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo what Susan just said to both of you, and I feel safer with both of you here, I'll tell you. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fair.
I'll be brief. I want to point out a gentleman that we are very pleased to have in the community because what he does in, for the community, Scott, I know he didn't want any recognition for this, but if it wasn't for that gentleman right there, our foundation, Kiwanis Cross Country Meet would not have been as successful as it was. So those of you who are in Kiwanis, thanks. Scotty, thanks a ton, man.
I have a really good staff.
Checks in the mail.
Thanks.
Thanks, Scott. Good troop.
You're welcome.
That's all.
Thank you. Mrs. Vale.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I too would like to, to say thank you for Mr. Zimmerman and Keating being here tonight, and thank you so much, Chief, for being here with us and for having a few words. We appreciate it, and we appreciate your invitation to come and see the department. Thank you. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Francis.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did have a lot of first readings on appointments, and then people were appointed tonight, so if they're watching, we can't thank the people enough, the citizens who volunteer and step up and get the phone call from the mayor and say, yeah, I'll do it. So, and this is their time, and they're not getting paid for it, so we can't thank you enough. Chief, thank you for coming. Thank you for the invite. I hope we were able to set up a meeting, a tour. I'll take a taser for everybody. You know, if it'll make the tour better, that, that would be...
That might be interesting.
I think we could sell tickets for that.
Yeah, okay.
Did she say she wanted a taser?
Hey, I don't think I want to.
Just, just one more thing. I was going to ask about the equipment I've seen at the American National Can spot. It is unattended, and I've used this as an example that we have an ordinance out there for property owners with high grass. When they clean this property up, are they going to mow that stuff down? Because that's my backyard.
I don't have an answer for you, John. We're doing the environmental cleanup right now.
I understand that, but there are, there are trees 15 years old on there that have just been left go, and if, if it's going to get cleaned up, again, we have property maintenance ordinance for private property, and that falls, I would just like to see the place cleaned up. It's, it's a disaster back there, so it's nice to see that the equipment's back there.
It's coming.
That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Brownie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Three quick items. First of all, I'd like to bring the public's attention. If you're not already aware, this weekend, Labor Day weekend on Saturday, August 30th, the Second Annual Ohio Lina Music Festival.